Good evening. How's everybody? Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today it's our Regular Commission Meeting of Wednesday, January 20, 2016. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Please bow your heads this evening so that we can thank the Lord for our daily blessings, for our meals, for family and friends. Tonight, we pray for the families of the United States Marines who lost their lives while serving our country. May God grant their families peace and closure to this horrible chapter in their life. We pray for all our elected officials at all levels so that they can stay true to the meaning of public service and make decisions that affect our community. We pray for leadership, for their vocation, and for their dedication. We pray for all of our residents, especially those that are ill and frail and those that are lonely. We ask for world peace. We ask you to keep our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, and servicemen and women out of harm's way, and we ask this in your name.
Amen. Captain, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Will Cole, please.
Will Cole, Mayor Eduardo Muñoz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candy D'Abelancas.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suárez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item, item four.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for January 6, 2016, Regular City Commission Meeting.
Thank you. Any comments?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. At this time, I would like to take out of order item 11A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11, under New Business Agenda Items, item 11A, Presentation of Recognition to Maria Fernandez on her Retirement After Thirty Years of Service to the City of West Miami by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. Maria, you know that you weren't going to have this many people tonight, right? So, that's the love that we have for you. Madam Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if you allow me and the members of the City Commission, I'd like to talk a little bit about Maria Fernandez this evening. I'll make it brief because I know we have a long agenda. First and foremost, congratulations on this achievement, Maria, Mari, as we know you and love you. Maria Isabel Fernandez joined the City of West Miami back in 1986. Maria is an exceptional human being. Only someone like Maria has been able to endure the challenges and the changes that have impacted the city's water and sewer billing department and the Finance and Administration Office during the years that she has served the city. For those who remember our infamous sewer connection fees, I'm sure that our former mayor, now our esteemed commissioner remembers those days, and only Maria, someone like Maria could have endured those difficult days. Maria has been compassionate, patient, understanding of everyone's issues and their problems, and has managed to keep the water department's standards, has set the bar very high. She has served the public with the utmost respect, even in the most difficult times. That is not an easy department. Maria has been able to get to know the residents of the City of West Miami, and I would, I want to say, she knows, she probably beats me to the punch, she knows about 90 percent of this community on a first-name basis. She's an excellent coworker, a team player. She has always stood ready to assist anyone who has needed her help with a lot of dignity. She has temporarily accepted assignments that went far beyond her call of duty, and the list is long. She is the true definition of the words integrity and honesty. She has stood up to situations respectfully just because justice and following the rules have to be her middle name. Maria retires with thirty years of commendable public service with a heavy heart. We have, I have accepted her retirement with a heavier heart. Maria is a big part of our institutional knowledge. She will join her husband, George, a retired law enforcement officer, in the life of leisure. I'm following right behind you. Maria will be missed, but to our benefit, Maria, Mari continues to live in the City of West Miami where she calls home, and I am sure that we will call upon Mari from time to time. Our friendship continues, and I would like to join the mayor and city commissioners and others wishing Maria Fernandez a happy and well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Mari, and thank you for your service.
If I can ask my colleagues to come forward for a presentation?
Hi. Happy New Year.
Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday.
Sixty, sixty-eight.
Juan, we're going to need the mic.
And most people in the City of West Miami, I think the word that I have is love. I'm serious, I'm serious. When you answer the phone, it's always, it's always to help, and I know when you answer the phone many times, those phones are not pressed, or not, it's somebody complaining about a water bill, somebody complaining about something, but you always have a way of give love back to people, and that's something that is so important to this reflection of us, and I appreciate that. With that, we want to present a plaque to you, Maria Fernandez, for the City of West Miami Water Department. In recognition for your contribution to the City of West Miami for three, thirty years of service to the water department, finance, administration departments, and for your loyalty, commitment, and dedication by promoting excellence in public work service and improving the quality of life for the City of West Miami and City. And this is presented to you by Mr. Commissioner Juan Blanes, Vice Mayor, Candy D'Abelancas, Commissioner Rodriguez, and Luciana Suárez. I'm very proud, I'm very proud to receive this. I also feel very blessed and very honored because of the people that I've worked with over the years. It's not always easy. Maria is not always super, super nice, but we try. Believe me, we try our best to serve the residents of the city because we love this city, and we want this city to continue the way it's been. So, may God bless us all and lead us in the right track and help us to do our work to be the best of our capacity. Thank you very much.
Maria is accompanied by her husband, George, and her, and her small children, her son, George Jr., and Alberto. Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I'd like to recognize some of her friends because we're not coworkers, we're friends, that are here this evening. If we could take a picture, if you would allow that. Thank you. We have Mercedes Leon, the Finance Director, Rita Rodriguez, Sonia Delgado, and Neri Gonzalez, and yours truly. And Neri, maybe somebody can take the picture.
Go work for them.
(laughing) Neri, she appears to be more serious than she does.
The girls.
(laughing)
Cheese, please. They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(inaudible)
(laughing)
The poverty.
(inaudible)
(laughing)
(inaudible)
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(inaudible)
(laughing)
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(inaudible)
(laughing)
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(inaudible)
(laughing)
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
(laughing)
Cheese, please.
Thank you.
They're thirty years, thirty years, no? Everybody's thirty years, everybody's thirty years.
Where you need all the growth, my concern is that the way the master plan was created, it might, if we do not revise, leads to all the big buildings surrounding and then the residential area in a big valley. So we need to see what the impact is going to be, the impact in traffic, the impact in the amount of parkings that are required per unit, because if not, we might have some impact in our streets. And there are a lot of residents here who really park in the streets because they don't have driveways. So I only, I'm only here to tell you that we have been very blessed to have wonderful elected officials throughout the years and an administration that have really taken care of the budget. We don't want to go back to the times when we were in a 52% deficit on the general fund. And I understand that, and the only way that you have the ability to bring funding for the city to continue is by doing that, but some balance needs to be established. And I'm not talking about anything that is in pipeline, anything that is already happening, because the rules cannot be set retracted to anyone. But the reality is that when you keep moving forward, all I'm asking is make sure you take the time to do an evaluation of the impact before, give yourself a little time, so it doesn't change the quality of residents that we have always have here and that sense of home that we have always felt in this city. Because this city has been wonderful in keeping that residential character, and we cannot stop growth, don't get me wrong. I cannot, look at the things that are happening that are very positive and beautiful for the city. But when you have 10 versus 30, it makes a difference. So I wanted to come over here and share my thoughts with you, because some of you, I was able to sit independently, only to talk about the comprehensive development master plan. I cannot talk to you about any zoning future issues, because the law doesn't allow that. And I am very respectful not to place anyone in that position. But I think that we need to take the moment to do an evaluation and to see what the impact is going to be in the city. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I really appreciate that we're here. I had a long day at commission meeting today with many people talking about Uber and many other issues, so it was more than 125 signatures to speak, so I'm not going to take your time more. And if there's anything that we can do at any time, you know I'm always ready to meet with you, to listen to you, and to work together for the benefit of the residents that we both represent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I would like to go back to the order of the agenda, and that will be item five.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a written report, however, I wanted to submit to the commission as advised at the last commission meeting. The sponsorship packet for the City of West Miami Art and Cultural Festival, I've placed handouts at the, in the railing here, and invite anyone who is here with us tonight to become acquainted with the program. Mayor, I know this is your initiative, and hopefully this year with the two-day festival, we're really going to put the city on the map. We are looking for sponsors, so those out there that would like to collaborate with the city, I think this is a perfect opportunity. And we're, the dates are March 12th and March 13th, 2016. We're two months away, literally two months away, less than two months away. So we hope that we'll be able to secure the funding, so that we can take now the festival to the next level and start with the preparation and the exhibits and the call for artists and everything that comes with planning for this event. It's a two-day festival, like I mentioned, and again, we welcome sponsors.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Manager. So March the 12th and the 13th?
March Saturday and Sunday, March 12th and March 13th, at the City of West Miami Cooper Park.
See you there. Next item?
Item six, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney this time. Thank you. Next item?
Item seven, report of the city engineers, non this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I have no report at this time.
Item nine, citizen presentations.
Okay.
And we have...
Anybody for citizen presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first person, Salvador Rodriguez. Please approach the podium.
Hi, my name is Salvador Rodriguez. I've been living in the area of City of West Miami for over 30 years. And basically, my concerns are the same as Commissioner Sosa. I'm all for expansion and for growth, but I want to make sure that whatever your future agenda is, take into consideration how it's going to affect the value of our houses, make sure that we don't get impacted by more traffic and more crime. So that's basically what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Raskin. I've been in City of West Miami for 18 years.
Madam, will you bring out the mic and just speak a little bit louder, please?
Sure. My name is Carol Raskin. I've been in West Miami for 18 years. I've got sort of the same concerns, and going to reiterate a little bit more of what Rebecca Sosa mentioned. I agree with the growth, the change, and keeping the upkeep of everything in West Miami growing with the times to keep us what we need to be. However, for the future of West Miami, I have concerns for the community as we go ahead. As far as as the rentals go up, can we look at surveys in other areas as to the crime that's gone up in those areas with the rentals? And if that is the case, and we are having the rentals and more people, can we up our police force, just doing circles and watching us, just to make sure to keep us as safe as we have been? Because our crime in this area is one of the best, and we'd like to keep it where we don't have that crime. Also, traffic studies to determine the impact on our neighborhoods and our residential as we drive. And based on the fact of the streets with all of these going up, will they be funneled into our neighborhoods through us when our kids or so forth are playing? And how can we avoid more of that speeding through our neighborhoods? And as far as with these apartments going up, is there any as far as affording housing complex with Section 8? And if there is no Section 8, can we be sure that that won't happen in the future? And just as far as it, it's the same thing, as far as parking with it, if you have a place that usually rents with one unit and one bedroom, they usually give you one parking space. Normally, there's two people in that. Will these places, if they are capped at eight stories, have enough parking to compensate? Or will they be parking all along the South of West Miami? Those are just my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Tania Rosio, former commissioner of the City of West Miami, and proud. My address is 6536 Southwest 22nd Street. I'm not going to hide my feelings. I feel that the commissioner was up here and her presentation was totally sincere. I want to remind her and everyone that resides around this area that we are talking about today, that she is a resident of the city, not the owner of the city. And everything that she has brought about and these other residents that are up here, we did too. 65th, 64th Avenue, 22nd Street, 21st, and 20th. And we had the same concerns. And I felt that you listened to us, but you made a decision to let these buildings go up. At first, I'll be honest with you, I was very, very upset. And we had to live through the construction of this that was not easy. Now we have the second building. The population that these two buildings have replaced, let me tell you, it's not 100%, but 200% better change. I have gone into the buildings, I have seen the apartments, I've seen the quality of construction, and I have seen the concern that these developers have placed in that, in the two buildings. And now I'm more for the fact that there's going to be another building, and guess what? It's going to be right adjacent to my property. My property ends and the building begins. Now, if that's not impact, I don't know what it is. So I feel that I'm qualified to speak about this. This city cannot, under any circumstances, try to avoid what is being presented here tonight. You're leaving yourself open for a very severe lawsuit. What is being presented today or what's being requested, okay? It's not legal, it's not correct. The city has to go forward, the future is here. I've seen it, I've lived through it. And let me tell you, if the building's going to go up on 8th Street and it's going to take away with some of the businesses that we have there, the same thing's going to happen that happened in our location, welcome it, because it is better than what we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go forward, let me clarify something, please. Citizen presentation, let's keep it brief. We want to listen to you, because only by listening to you, we, I mean, this is, we understand what we need in the City of West Miami. And what you have seen up to now is plans that have taken many years, but we always listen to you. So, but let's keep it to the subject, if that's the subject or any other subject, because that's what citizen presentation is about. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else for citizen presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administration, I just want to, I have two points. I just wanted to intro by saying today happens to mark my 73rd birthday. More importantly, it marks my 46th year of involvement with the City of West Miami. I let those on this dais and previous commissions and our district commissioner to evaluate whether those 46 years have been positive or negative or somewhere in between. I want to publicly, this is the first point, congratulate this commission and probably maybe three previous ones for having the vision, the thought, and the intelligence to steer the city through the worst recession since the Great Depression. And every resident should do the same thinking I am doing, because it's unbelievable. Secondly, I'd like to publicly state that Rebecca Sosa, as far as I'm concerned, was a great mayor, and in my 46 years, I have no hesitation to state unequivocally that she has been the best commissioner that has ever represented the City of West Miami. Prior to 46 years, I cannot discuss. That was my first point. The second point is about our future. Forgetting your current and present income and indebtedness, our auditors have told you and would repeat, and the mayor himself has said, and I absolutely agree, thank God we have turned the corner and we have a bright, bright future ahead of us. Why is that important to every resident? It's a matter of whether your taxes are going to go up or not, funding for services, present and future, are necessary. Where is that money going to come from? Most importantly, this city is facing a major infrastructure situation. And I am referring to your water system. This is nothing new to anyone sitting on a dais, and I assume nothing new to most people that are informed about the City of West Miami. What and how is that to be funded? We're talking about not quality of just water, we're talking about quality of life. A lot of people who live in Michigan, they'll give a story about water and quality of life. There are two ways primarily, or three, grants, your reserve funds, may they only grow, and there is income from future development. No one in this room that has any knowledge doesn't understand that this was a long-range plan and what presently in existence was approved many years ago and with Commissioner Sosa's knowledge and help. My vision hasn't changed, I hope your vision hasn't changed. You're going to have to fund. And every resident sitting here needs to weigh and has a proper right to ask the commissioner to evaluate. Whenever there's a change, people, eventually, people always become concerned. This is human nature. If in fact you don't go full-heartedly forward with development, in my opinion, you face one or two possible alternatives. One is the residents will have to have their taxes substantially increased. That should be weighed in your mind. I'm not going to talk about a potential legal suit. That's not definite. I'm talking about definite. The other way is through financing, a conjunction. Let me tell you, if your income does not increase, there is no way you will go to any financial institution and secure the necessary funding, because they're going to look at your income and what you're going to dedicate or plan to dedicate in terms of this. So what's the other way that the city can hold on? Increase taxes and go through, and I'm talking big time. Or it can ask the county, which it enquired of years back, for the county to take over the water and sewer system, because then they wanted both considered it. I don't know what they consider now, but you won't get away with just offering the water, of that I'm positive. So the residents need to understand, not only you're talking about your taxes, this water improvement is going to have to happen, and it's going to have to be paid for. So it's going to be your taxes or being served by Dade County. You tell me whose service you think you put your faith in, even with the great commissioner, Dade County or the City of West Miami? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizen presentation?
Yes.
Antonio, before you continue, I used to do some quick math over here on the number of people, and let's try to keep it short and to the point and not repetitions, please. And that goes for everybody. Apology accepted.
I'll be brief. No problem. My name is Antonio Yanez, I live at 6546 Southwest 22nd Street. Three things, and I'm going to make them brief. Number one, Happy New Year to everybody, haven't seen you since last year. Second, if we all recall, when that building originally, before we had the Great Debacle of 2008 happened, I was the only one who stood up here and spoke for the building when the entire residency, the entire area, including my lovely neighbor, who, she's pardoned me finally, said, said, "This is crazy what we're going to have." Well, it was crazy what we had. The riffraff that was there, I had just moved in, I've got two daughters, I was constantly on the call, on calling the police department, to the point that I was on a first-name basis with the dispatch. We now have the building. Yes, we had to sit through the construction phase up. Okay, well, it was a little dusty, it was a little dirty, my wife was angry at times because of how things were. Okay, we got past it. We have a beautiful building. We hardly have any vagrants running around, there's not that much other stuff. Litter has gone down considerably. I'm not finding the beer bottles, the condoms, the little doggy bags that we used to find. Oh yes, okay? We don't have this anymore. Now what you have, families walking, people walking their dogs, kids riding bicycle, riding their little hoverboards, and we don't hear yelling and screaming. And we have a beautiful building. Well, what could we ask for? I also stated, the only way that we're going to allow and alleviate a lot of our taxes, because we pay higher taxes than even the people next door to the city here, which is in Coral Gables, we're a higher miller rate than them, and they're a prestigious area. Okay? Because the only way that we have it, because we have no room, is to build up. And if we don't build up and get more density into this city, what are we going to do? You're going to, you're going to break the back of us homeowners, literally. You know, the traffic, I haven't seen that much of an increase in the traffic. I will tell you this, I have seen a decrease as far as some of the speeders. People have realized, well, there's more people in the area, we need to slow down. Do we have the occasional speeder? Oh yeah, I know. And I, and I bother the chief all the time about it, and he knows. So if we're going to have buildings, and I understand what Commissioner Sosa's saying, everybody in my area was scared of it, everybody now is happy about it. You're going to have traffic, there's traffic everywhere. We're a city that's growing. If you think traffic is bad here, get out in the morning on 8/26. You'll see traffic that's bad, even with the widening, it's still bad. That's mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, 6556 Southwest 23rd Street. I'll make a brief, a couple of points. The first one is, I was also here with you as a concerned citizen prior to the first building going up, as you're aware. And my belief is that every citizen of West Miami deserves the same consideration, whether they're prominent or not. And we all sat here, it's public knowledge, public hearing, it's in the records, where we came before your board with our considerations of the ones that were going to be affected, and you took that into consideration. We listened to you, you told us the vision of the city, our much-needed, your much-needed revenues that these would bring to the city that we needed, and we were supportive. The building has, again, a couple blocks from my home, affects my parents directly, has been wonderful. Honestly, it's such a tremendous difference, it's a positive difference. I want to also note that, considering the zoning, you know, it's pretty much the same outskirts of the city. When I'm looking at the leaders that I elected, you've already set the precedence. So I'm here as an informed and concerned citizen, and I'm looking at your credibility as commissioners and your credibility as elected leaders. You gave us the vision, we pushed through it, we're here, we expect you to continue where you began, and we expect to see that building up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edgar Delgado?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, it's attorney.
I think that we ought to talk about generalities and not the specific project that we might or might not have in a particular area or a particular place. I don't think that we should address something that has not been before or advertised, and I think that in overall bundle, so caution, I would request that the chair addresses the generalities, what might or might not affect the quality of life and not to a specific place.
Thank you. Your attorney?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Happy New Year to you all. Hopefully a prosperous New Year to West Miami, to all of you and to your families. Edgar Delgado, 6556 Southwest 23rd Street and 6547 Southwest 23rd Street. And it's pretty simple, the reason why I'm here today is just to voice my support for the current zoning. Like my wife said, we have been here before, we stood before you a couple of years ago with our concerns, and we were concerned, of all the changes and all the things that we're going through to our city. We've lived here for many, many years. My father and mother-in-law have been living here for 30 years, my wife for over 20 years, and, you know, almost 20 years from me now. Our children were born here, and we love the city. And, you know, when we think quality of life, and my wife and I look for a long term in, you know, living in the city, we are concerned and we always want what's best for us and what's best for our family and for the city. And I could tell you out of experience that we were one of those concerned citizens. Antonio is one of my, you know, my neighbors as well as a few others. I live next to Selma Beckham, as you know, one of the oldest living residents in West Miami. 23rd Street is one of those streets that's a little bit on the outskirts, and we're surrounded by commercial areas and, you know, also surrounded by some residential areas. But we can't ignore the fact that there's a lot of opportunity now for West Miami. The news is out, we are a prime location, and all these developments that want to come to us, we should be able to have the opportunity to entertain and see if they make sense to us. And if they do, obviously you have the power to move them forward. But we can't just be afraid of change. We were, you know, my family was one of those that was afraid of change, and they proved us wrong. The building is excellent, the changes that have occurred in the area have been positive. You know, CVS was built right next to my house, literally next to my house. The proposed buildings are going to affect me more than anyone else on 23rd Street, and I'm looking forward to it. And I hope that you, you know, with your support, that we can move the city forward and bring a lot of good things to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Teresa Fuentes Smart?
Good evening, I did not have any, this is Teresa Fuentes Smart, 901 Southwest 63rd Avenue. I didn't really have any plans of speaking, but as a proud resident of the City of West Miami, I see a lot of beautiful changes that are going on. I got the opportunity to go and see the Celeste, and it was beautiful, it really is beautiful. I like how they taper down the back, so the size, facing the residence, it's, it looks like a townhouse. You know, it's not this monstrosity of a building when you're looking at it from the resident's side. My concern, I'm right here, 901 Southwest 63rd Avenue, I know there's proposals, I don't want to see this huge block of a building. So my question to you is, what's the height? If it's going to be a block, just like what's in the City of Miami side, if you look at the City of Miami building, it needs a paint job. It's a huge block, when there's folks outside in the balconies, you hear them, when, you know, now that it's cold, you hear them, and they're not that loud, but you hear them, sound travels. So if we're going to have this huge high-rise facing the City of West Miami, when somebody's sitting in a balcony, just having a drink and talking and laughing, it carries, okay? So my question to the commission, these buildings that you're approving in generality, like, you know, Mr. Williams was saying, in generality, what's the height? I am just seriously concerned, we need to have a buffer with the residential side. They did a beautiful job, the Celeste, I went to the ground opening, I was impressed. I walked in, walked through a lobby, I was like, my God, I'm somewhere in Europe, I don't know where I was. It was beautiful. And I think it does enhance the City of West Miami, we just got to be careful what, again, if you know what's the height, if it's going to be taped... be tapered down to, to, on the residential side, just makes it look like townhouses, homes, that, but if you have a nine, 10-story building, you cannot do that. So, that's my question to you. I, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I'm concerned. I, as a, as a proud resident of the city, I drive around, I see a lot of people cleaning and painting, and the houses are just looking beautiful. And so, it's, it's like this, you know, the bug of, of making your homes look pretty is happening in the city. We wanna continue that, and keep that residential hometown feeling.
To answer your question, to answer your question, very simple. What you have seen in the past is what's predicated in the future. The rules that have been studied, written, and so on, to protect the residential area. Okay?
But if one of, one of the areas, if there's not sufficient real estate or right-of-way to do the tapering down, I would be concerned that you have what, I mean, again, what is the height of the building that is being, you know, allowed without tapering down? That would be my concern. If you don't have enough space to taper it down, like they did here on, on 67th Avenue, I would be concerned. We need to make sure we have that buffer, and I invoke the commission to make sure that we do do that.
Thank you.
Eddie.
Thank you.
Eddie.
Yes.
No, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know whether you needed some clarification, but I, I think we're fine for now.
Okay. Anybody else?
Robert, yes, Mr. Mayor, Robert Suris and Tony Castro.
Mr. Mayor, commissions, commissioners, city manager, city attorney, and staff, was not planning on speaking today, but there's been so much mention.
State, state your, your name, well, not your name, but the, the address for the record, please.
Robert Suris, 4949 Southwest 75th Avenue, principal of the estate companies. You are the ones responsible for the building that's being spoken about, and I will talk in generalities. And my, my intention was really not to speak today, but so much has been spoken about it that I thought it was important that I get up and, and speak about it. There is no doubt that we, as developers, sometimes are seen as the bad folks coming in and imposing things on, on tenants and residents, sorry. You know, one of our very first things we did when we came to the city of West Miami, we, we were very transparent, and we were very clear with the city manager and the planning director when we first looked at the possibilities of doing this, this product. And one of our concerns, one of the things we always said, is we want our products to be very compliant and, and smooth and work with the community. It doesn't work for us if it doesn't work for them. And I'm glad a lot of the people that are here that spoke, you know, it's just a testimonial of when this is done correctly, it works extremely well for everybody. It works for the residents, it works for the commercial districts, it works for the city. This is really a partnership, and, and the intent is, is to make all those pieces work in conjunction. You know, the city has a zoning code, because we're talking in generalities, that is, that does respect that transition from eight stories to five stories, to two stories, to one stories. And in only and very isolated spots does that, that does not happen. For whatever reason, it was not incorporated. I think those are areas that require additional zoning work, but it's really to create the tapering, because you're, you're budding eight-story buildings, and you have a residential home. So, and I wanna applaud the commissioner for coming out here, because she does point out, and she is, you know, she has been a, you know, a strong fighter for, for West Miami for 40-something years, and I know that her, in her heart, her best interest is for the city of West Miami. And it is for us as well. Of anybody here, we probably have the biggest stake in the city of West Miami. We've made humongous investments here, and, and, you know, we love the city as much as any resident, because this is where we live from. This is, this is, you know, we've created something that, for us, is a legacy, and so, we wanna do it right. We wanna, you know, we've always spoken with our heart, we've never hidden any agenda. We've always been very transparent in all the projects and all the things that we wanna do. We wanna do it in conjunction with the city. And for the neighbors that are in areas that are, are being maybe proposed to build other buildings, I think you have to listen to the other neighbors that already went through the experience and, and experienced, yes, construction is no fun. Construction is a, it's a very challenging process, not only for us, for the city, but for the residents. And unfortunately, with progress, there's always a little bit of pain, but the results are incredible. I'll give you a poor example. Our, our building displaced a population that was detrimental to the city of West Miami. And talk about safety, there was no safety in that corridor. As a matter of fact, we've had one break-in, and that break-in came from one, one building that we own that has a list of tenants that we're in the process of getting rid of that just attract a very bad crowd. And so, as a resident, I would be concerned about those types of commercial properties that unfortunately are not conducive to what I think the vision of West Miami is. The West Miami today, I think, is now attracted, because of the buildings that have come in, has attracted the eye of a lot of people. They say that, you know, Marco Rubio made West Miami, I don't know. I hear a lot more about our buildings than I hear about Marco Rubio in West Miami. But, you know, West Miami's here. It's on the map. We, we see institutional players, you know, insurance companies, New York funds, looking at West Miami for the first time. And we don't just want our properties developed, we want the entire corridor developed. Why? Because our buildings need institutional boxes, they need Starbucks. We need to attract the type of resident, retail tenants that will only enhance the residents' life here in West Miami. Wouldn't it be beautiful to be able to walk from your house into a corridor and, and go shopping, and go to a nice restaurant and go? It's coming. All of that is coming. It starts with a little bit of density. And we address all the concerns. We don't have overflow parking. We address the parking. We address, the city code addresses that. So, I think a lot of the concerns are because of fear and lack of knowledge versus reality. I think reality is, you have to listen a little bit to the testimonies of some of the folks that were here today, and we appreciate the support. Say something. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tony Castro, Estate Companies, 4949 Southwest 75th Avenue. I get the fun part of the presentation. I get to do a show and tell tonight, and I'm gonna keep it really short. If I may, I'd like to put up two poster boards.
Is this about, sir, is this about a, a project that's going to happen?
No, sir. It's an update to the city and, and the residents on a project that is already being, being occupied. Just a progress report on, on, on the project that is on 67th Avenue. I think it's good for the city, I think it's good for the residents to know what's happening in their community.
Is that okay, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, a citizen presentation is for specific purposes, and what, this has been advertised, and this has been already in the pipeline, and a presentation will be made. You know, it's up to you, but I do have my...
No, 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 but, okay, this is something that is already built, this is not coming before us, right? Okay.
No, this is an update on where this building is in terms of the community, the residents, and the population in general.
Okay.
So, we, we completed the building sometime around September. It was sealed September of last year. The building has 200 units, 206 units. By the end of September, it was over 50% occupied. There's a lot of demand. City of West Miami is in a very, very prime spot. We believe, I think, everybody in this room believes it's very central. It's been a, an untapped resource that's in, in the middle of town. As of today, we are 80% occupied, about 85% leased. In terms of the residences and the impact to the residences, a couple of the individuals spoke here, and I think that they will agree, I think anybody that drives the area will agree, that all the houses surrounding the project have actually started upgrading their properties. You'll see driveways, you'll see landscaping where there was dirt, you'll see backyards that are fixed up where there was garbage. The whole general area has re, around the building has really upgraded. When we designed this building, we, we spent a lot of money in, in little things that didn't count for anything except aesthetic beauty for the surrounding neighborhoods. Landscaping, I think we probably spent five, six times what a normal developer would've spent just to integrate into the building. The design of the building was a step down, as we were saying before, to integrate into the community, where it ends up at a two-story level in the, in the closest section to the community. I think a lot of people in this room have toured the property. It's, it's a, a Class A property. Traffic to the, to the general community was addressed during the design phase, and we made sure to try to direct as much traffic into the main corridors, being 67th Avenue here, to where the, the communities were not impacted. Once the second phase is, that has already started, is completed, there will be an actual private driveway to keep traffic into 67th Avenue and completely away from the city. So, every, every, every effort from an engineering, from a design perspective, was carried out to minimize the impact to the neighborhoods. And the last point on parking, within our building design, we probably have about 15% to 20% more parking than is required by the code, specifically because we didn't want to, to impact any of the community. So, parking is, is, is not a problem. I think you'll speak to the residents around the area, and again, those testimonials are the best ones to listen to, where there are less parking issues today than there were two years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the citizen presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Would you like me to proceed then to the next item, the regular order of the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, please.
Yes, item on the new business agenda items, item 11C, would be the report by Florida International University regarding status of comprehensive plan updates.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I know you read it. I've been asked if we can take a five-minute break, so, if that's okay with the table?
No problem, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, we're taking a five-minute break?
Okay.
Bye. Bye.[1322.63]
...back, and I think we did, we submitted that in November of this past year. And had, we had some discussion on that. The third item of business relative to the contract was a, really an update of the old 2000 plan, was to turn all those amendments that have been, that have been adopted over the years into one unified document. And to also, the up, also to update the comprehensive plan in terms of the demographic and economic profile. And at the same time, while we were doing that, we, we, in doing our research around the state, we realized that a lot of cities in the state were now looking at economic elements to the comprehensive plan. As you may know, the economic element to the comprehensive plan is, is an optional element, but more and more cities are looking at that now, particularly post-recession, where we all now can understand the importance of the economy and setting that as a real priority. So we did submit a draft economic element to the city as well, and we had some discussion on that last November as well. So at this point, we, we're really in the process of completing the, the unified document. As you know, the census just updated to 2014 in December. We were updating through 2013, but with that new data, we're just gonna go ahead and include the 2014 data, so we might as well have the most current data that we can possibly have, including economic data for, for the city. So that's what we're adding in the process. That's still going to take a couple of weeks in, in terms of, you know, rewriting essentially the, the 2000 document and incorporating the new data, the new democrat, demographic data and economic data as well. With that, I would suggest that we could put this in letter format to the city manager. We have a, a mutually agreed upon no-cost extension between the City of West Miami and Florida International University that I believe is due to expire on January 31st.
That's correct.
I would suggest, and certainly request from, from the, from the, from the city that, that we extend that probably another 30 days. Once again, it's a no-cost extension. Obviously, we're, we'd be willing to come here, no cost anyways for you, but, but just under the contract, terms of the contract, we should, we should get that approved as well for the, for another 30 days. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else that you want to add? Okay. Mr. Attorney, how do we proceed? And I know this is not a public hearing and, and, you know, but in other words, I need your guidance.
We requested a report from FIU as to the status of the report that is presented to you. You accept the report. There have been an extension for another 30 days. I think that it will be proper. It's not gonna cost the city anything. In the meantime, those, that would give us an opportunity for them to sit with us and give us a roadmap. In other words, this is step one, step two, step three. We have to advertise it this way, then you're gonna do this, and so on and so forth. And that would be part of the, the presentation that they might be doing in the future. I would suggest at this time to perhaps not table the issue, because all they are doing is to present a report, but set forth some sort of date which they might come back after they have completed their work with the administration. And I'd be very happy to sit down with you and, and check it out, and we'll do the, the, whatever advertising needs to be done, et cetera. And at this point, your job, I think, is to accept the report as it is, and set it down for another day so we can complete the process.
I, I have, I have a suggestion. Madam Manager, you, you look like you want to say something.
Yes, sir. And just for cle, purpose of clarifications, Dr. Mary obviously gave you a, a brief summary of what their study entails, but there are two elements there that are new to the comm plan, if I'm not mistaken, and that's the economic development piece and the TDRs, as we know them, the transfer of development rights. We would like to get some direction from the commission, whether you want to entertain that or elim, or take that out of the plan, so that we can move forward in preparing a final draft for the purpose of the public hearing, which I understand, based on our conversations, Dr. Mary and Mr., Dr. Rosado, that we need to go into a public hearing session before the local planning agency, which is in essence, the mayor and the city commissioners become your local planning agents. And so I think we need some guidance here, so that they can go to work and finish the, the, the product, and then bring it back in a public hearing setting. And the roadmap that Mr. Villalobos has just mentioned to you is basically a list of timelines that we need to meet in order to complete this process. I personally do not believe that we can accomplish this in the next 30 days, so I would actually yield or recommend, if you, if I may, that we ask Florida Interna, International University to extend the contract, hopefully at no cost, for an additional 90 days. We must make the, we must meet statutory requirements on the advertisement for the comm plan, and obviously, we have to notice it and invite the public to participate. So that, the transmittal of the document, whenever that's approved, and however, in whatever format it is approved, it is important that we have sufficient time so that we're not back here every 60 days asking you for another contract extension.
I think that's a good idea, and, and also, I know that we're not supposed to, you know, discuss it tonight, but it, it's proven that you, you got some, some guidance. I, I think we were concerned with the TDRs, eh, eh, as it was presented. It's obviously after the presentation that we had here tonight, that there's some concerns, and, and we always listen, you know, as we got praise for certain things, but also be cautioned for certain things. And, and one thing that we have done in the City of West Miami is always to listen to everybody, listen to the positives and the negative and so on, and, and make sure that, that it's always a win-win situation. So if we can give you some, some, I know that for many reasons, we can regress unless it's, it's something that is good for everybody moving forward. I, I think, and this is something that, of course, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it in a public setting, because this hasn't been advertised, but the, the concern that personally I have is, is with the TDR and, and making any changes to, to the master plan without studying it further. So maybe from, from, from a legal point at this time, we, we concluded, we, so on, and, and it looks like we might need to, you know, to tweak it in, in the future, but eh, and, and this is myself speaking in, in that sense. TDRs make me very uneasy, and as you can see, eh, every step of the way, you know, we did a master plan, and it's, it's, it's not a, a situation that is good for, for eternity. You know, we have to make adjustments as, as we go along to, to make sure that we're doing the right thing for, for the City of West Miami, because we have to look at the city as a whole. We have to look at the commercial areas, but also we have to look at, very important, the residential area, and that's one of the rea, I mean, that's the main reason we look, we moved to the city, or we, you know, are raising our families here, so.
Commissioner Suarez.
Do you present this report? I do not agree with this report. I think if, I do not agree with this report. In order for me to continue in this, we have to get together and go over this, because many things here, I don't, I do not agree, and I would like to study this more, go deep in things and details, and that's, I don't know if you make a workshop, or I go to your office, or you come to the city, or what we do, but I, I think the, the report, if you tell, this is your report, personally, I don't agree with this actual report. I, I think we, personally, I need to go over this with you, in order to digest whatever is it, and give you the, my concern, because that's what you're looking for, right? Okay, well, I do not agree with the actual report. I think we would like to get together with you and make a difference.
Any, any other comments?
No.
Okay, Mr. Attorney? Okay. So in abundance and caution, according to the city manager, you need to get together in terms of, one thing that we have to, can, can you contemplate the extension of the contract further than, than the 30 days? Perhaps a 90-day window?
Yeah, that, that won't be a problem. We'll put that in writing to the city manager.
Okay. And then the second thing is, need to get together with the administration. As you can see, there's some concern, and, so we can set deadlines and, and also property, you know, properly advertise it and so on, so.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, let me just be clear. So I'm clear, and everyone else is clear. Nothing's going to happen tonight. We are going to extend our contract with FIU to be able to gather more information. We've passed nothing, nothing goes forward.
That is correct.
Perfect. Just want to be sure I understood and that everyone else understood what we were doing tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item 11D. This is a public hearing, a second reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami repealing ordinance number 2015-09, which authorizes the city manager to designate certain residential areas as residential parking only, designating areas three blocks from any commercial area, creating a residential parking zone, creating a residential and visitor parking decal program, and establishing a citation for non-compliance, provide for codification for severity, provide for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Rodriguez. And this public hearing was advertised in a newspaper of general circulation on January 8th, 2016.
Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, along the lines with what you said, we, we always pride ourselves on listening to our residents. So after the meeting where we, we discussed this, we had a lot of residents here asking for this ordinance, we were approached, I was approached by many residents who had some concerns with, with the ordinance as passed. And in talking with, you know, with staff, I thought it best that we bring it back to the table to, to look at things that, ways we could make it better, okay? Better for the residents, better for the city. And when we said we were going to pass this for the entire business corridor, there were a lot of residents who don't need it, don't want it, and totally disagreed with it. Some of those residents here in attendance tonight expressed their concern. So I thought it best that we, we brought it back and, and discussed it, and we see if there's perhaps a better way for the city and the residents to address the residents' concern. And I had to do it soon, right after that meeting that we passed it for legal reasons, so that's why I brought it back so quickly to the table. And with that, I'm gonna yield to, to staff, because they do have some information to provide.
Okay. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, and I think I've talked to each one of you individually, since the passage of the ordinance that you're entertaining, repealing this evening, I've taken the time myself personally, and I've also asked the police department during different days of the week and different hours of the day, and we've handed you a, a packet containing colored photographs of the area in question where a parking concern were, was raised by the residents in the immediate area off of 67th Avenue. And I want to say that the trouble spots were between 20th and 23rd Street, between 65th Avenue and 67th Avenue. We took pictures, we have copied those pictures. In addition to that, the code enforcement officer and I visited the commercial establishment that is on the, on the west side of the city, on 67th Avenue, where, which appeared to be where the problem was stemming from. It appeared, it appears that the employees of a commercial establishment outside our city limits were using our public right-of-ways to park there. Again, we have a public right-of-way where it's very difficult to enforce parking or issuing citations. Nonetheless, we took into consideration, and you took into consideration, the concerns that were raised by the residents. So after we made the business in the area, realized that their employees were parking in our city limits and it was causing an inconvenience, we went there on a very friendly note. It seems to me that the problem has, has minimized. I think it's been eliminated. I have pictures of, I have pictures of the public right-of-way areas, and there are, I think with the exception of maybe friends and families.
Well, they took the full form.
I believe that there are, Mr. Mayor, there really are no issues at hand, and the pictures speak louder than words. Each one of you have a packet. We have dated the days of the pictures, that the days that they have been taken. We have also put in there and specified the hour of the day that the pictures were taken, and I have instructed the police department to continuously monitor the area for the parking in the right-of-ways, so to make sure that there are no, no driveways that, that are blocked, and people that are parking there that are really creating a problem for the rest of the residential area of the city. So based on these pictures, I mean, unless you can show me something to the contrary, I, I go by there once a day, at least in the general area, and I usually try to do it before I come into work in the morning, or after I leave the office to see the behavior there. Our concern is that we are, we have an ordinance on the books, and the residents left here with a sense of peace of mind that the city was going to implement a, a system that would prohibit other than residential parking in the public right-of-way. Again, Commissioner Rodriguez brings that to the table, because some residents saw the videotape of the meeting, have called, and they live in and around the three-block area that was set by this ordinance, and they're not particularly happy with the measures taken that have basically a blanket effect on the city, when in fact, the concentration of the problem appeared to be in that section of town, in the southwest section of town. So we've received complaints. We believe that we may have a tool that we're not able to use and enforce, and based on the pictures that we have taken, I believe that the situation may have been resolved. So I proceeded, Mr. Mayor, to set up a meeting with the community that was affected by this. The issue of timing became an issue because of the notice that was given for the meeting, and then I further explained to the residents via an email that this was basically a follow-up meeting to interchange ideas, to share the pictures with the residents in that area, to advise them that we may have a potential problem trying to enforce the ordinance that was done, and to basically let them know that we've had concerns from other areas that don't necessarily agree with the ordinance that was passed by the commission. So in keeping with what has occurred since that November meeting, we have, you know, we have tried to address the situation, and I look at it from a different angle, and I think I posed the, the recommendation to you back in November. I think the city should maybe put up some deterrent signs that basically states residential parking only, and I think those signs will be as beneficial as having an ordinance on the books, but more beneficial, because you have an ordinance on the books that we will have problems enforcing. We don't have the dedicated police presence that can be concentrated to that area, and I really believe the problem has been resolved in the area. Again, I know that there is off-street parking because of a development that has been approved already by this commission, and the workers are parking in the public right-of-way, and some of the pictures will depict those workers' cars or vehicles. And again, we talked about the inconvenience that some of the projects and developments bring to the area, and, and so these are the small, or, or for some folks, big inconveniences. But other than that, I have not seen any other person, you know, any other person parking there or extending their stay during the day, because we've, we've been checking and monitoring the area.
Okay.
So that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Yes, I do. So, well, two things. The, the construction parking is a temporary thing, but, okay, so we heard, and before I open, because this is a public hearing, and we need to, to hear also from the public, before I turn it to open the public hearing, again, what's the recommendation by staff after looking at this?
I believe we should install some deterrent signs. I think they work well. I mean, if I'm a driver and I go into an area and I see a sign and it says residential parking only, and I, I have a commercial vehicle, or I have a working van, and I'm going to the other part of town, I'm going to refrain from parking in that area.
Okay.
Or put something to the effect, no commercial vehicles, residential parking only, and use those as deterrents. And I believe that they will have the same effect, if not better.
Okay. Any, anybody else from staff? Any comment from the police department before I open? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I agree with the city manager's recommendation. The captain and lieutenant, I have gone by that area at different times because of the concern that was expressed a few meetings ago about the, the parking in the area, and since the meeting that code enforcement and the manager had with the owner of that business, apparently the situation has been mitigated, and parking issue that was there before is no longer occurring, but those signs would be a, a good deterrent.
Thank you. Anything else from staff? Okay?
No, sir.
Open the public hea, let, let's open the, the public hearing and listen to the public, and then come back to the table. Anybody wants to speak on the subject?
Again, good evening. My name is Tyler Rosio, 6536 Southwest 22nd Street. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I have an apology for you, for Mrs. Aguilar. I sent an email in reference to the meeting that you were trying to conduct, and I had the wrong information as to what type of a meeting. This is a courtesy meeting. I appreciate it. I applaud you, like always. You have been there to listen to us, to our concerns. And what I put in the email, yes, if there is anything that by passing this ordinance, it would jeopardize the city, and any and all residents, whether in the immediate area or not, would be jeopardized, or would be, it would not be good for them, no, no, because we, we don't want to do that. This is, this is a city that we don't need this kind of situation and have people come back that are happy, that are negatively affected. I appreciate it, Commissioner Rodriguez. Thank you very much for listening to us and to bringing this forward, but I agree, the situation in our immediate area has disappeared. They have moved down the street. That's not my concern. I don't care. But this idea that you have of putting these signs, I think that would be very good, and it would be appreciated, so that these people will not come back in a while, they're forgetting, and they will come back because they don't want to walk the three blocks that they're walking now. But that they are parking there, yes, ma'am. But again, I appreciate it, and under no way or condition, I want this city to be jeopardized or the neighbors around the area to be negatively affected. Thank you very much for your concern, for listening to me, and again, this is the best city to live in. I've said it time and time again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Antonio Yanez, I believe he has come in.
Okay, that's it?
No more presentations.
Okay. Nobody else? Okay. Close the public hearing, back to the table. Any comments? Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to make sure that the signs that are being proposed are appealing and placed in a, in areas where they're seen, but are, that, that won't affect the, the residents as far as them being able to park and access the parkway. Hopefully, that can, that can be done. I know how much you like to make things blend into the residential area, and I think Coral Gables has some signs that are different than from the standardized type of signage that's used through the county. That blends in real well with the residential, so maybe we can use those, if that's possible.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing, and I don't know what formula we're gonna use in the spacing of these signs, but can we check with the resident if we're gonna put it in front of their house, let's say, and that, what, can we knock on the door and ask them, you know, just, let's just individually check with each resident where we intend to put the sign? Let's just talk to them before we put it there.
Sure. And what I will do is I'll get with the Director of Public Works and the Police Department, the chief, and go out there and try to find strategic places to put up the signs, and what we'll do for you is, we'll give you some red flags and show you where the proposed signage will be, and we'll be in touch with the residents in the area by knocking on their door or making contact with them, and maybe meeting them out there on a, on a given date.
Specifically, the ones that, that the sign will be literally in front of their, in front of the residents?
Right. And I'll get with Mr. Pena. I don't know whether that signage must be ordered by, through Miami-Dade County, is that the protocol? Those are our own signs, and we can order them, because they're not regulatory signs are going to be used for deterring purposes.
Will you come back to us before the wording, so we can?
Yes, and I propose that we maybe spend some PTP money, cert tax dollars, in ordering those signs, and we'll give you a sample of the signs, so that you're all comfortable with the aesthetics of the sign.
Perfect.
It may take a little while. These things take time. These signs take time to order, so let's give it six to eight weeks, more or less, to, to be able to have the, the signage up. Is that doable, Mr. Pena?
Okay.
Daniel, you'll let the neighbors know what we're doing, right? Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, and we will be in touch with the, with the area residents. We'll talk to everybody there, and we'll, we'll basically canvas the area and try to find some good locations where it doesn't inhibit visibility, it doesn't impede the residents from parking in the area.
Perfect.
We'll order something nice.
Usually, they work the best when you line that up in between properties, so, so they're not right in front of their property, so.
Right.
But, but again, you know, police department can look into that, and, you know, traffic, and especially public work director.
And the other reason that, that they take long is we gotta get clearance to be able to, to put it in a pool. We have to get clearance from the utility company that used to be called Uncle, I think they're Sunshine now, right? We have to get clearance to make sure that there are no gas lines in those right-of-ways where we could potentially, you know, have, have an accident, so please be patient. We will address it right away, but these things do take a little bit of time.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I want to publicly thank the res, the affected residents for their open-mindedness and understanding why I brought this back to the table. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, it's been a, it's gonna be a...
Maybe I'm wrong, but counsel can be checked. Would you really need to do that?
Elliot, Elliot.
I have amended ordinance to take a vote.
That's why we have an attorney here, so if he's, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Um, you put some... I was gonna call for a motion, and that's all.
Yes, sir. I mean, you're...
He's not a positive order.
You're...
Yes, sir, I mean, you opened a, you opened a hearing for a public hearing and you heard from the public, you're brought to the table and then you called for comments and you did follow proper procedure, so you go ahead and vote.
Okay.
Motion to repeal. For a motion.
Motion to repeal. What are you looking for?
It's a motion to repeal, correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes. Motion to approve this ordinance to repeal former ordinance.
There are amendments to the, to the ordinance that were recommended by the city manager. Like striking, we should strike.
One at a time, my clerk.
Parking decal. From the ordinance.
You're repealing the ordinance, that's what you're doing.
To approve the ordinance that is repealed in the...
You're repealing the ordinance that was previously approved with these changes, but from these changes you recommending, for example, from this heading, striking the portion of creating a residential and visitor parking decal program? Those are amendments that you recommended and establishing, for example, designating certain residential areas as residential parking only.
Correct.
Designating areas three blocks from any commercial area.
And placing deterrent signs.
Creating a residential parking zone and striking the creating a residential and visitor parking decal program, establishing a citation for non-compliance and then approving provide for certification, provide for severability and for an effective date.
Repealing the previous order?
Yes.
Yes, repealing the previous ordinance and approving this ordinance with the amendments we commanded.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Okay.
The confusion is originally we amended the parking ordinance that we have, which governs the parking meter area. We included this as part of that ordinance. So you're not repealing the entire ordinance, you're repealing the section that you amended back then, which is what the clerk is trying to state. It's not the whole ordinance in itself, it's certain sections that affected the...
Correct.
Thank you for the information. Do I understand?
Well, we have put before, yeah.
Okay. Any further clarification? So we have a motion on the table. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mungia?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is item 11E and Mr. Mayor, this office has received a petition to remove this item from the agenda. I received this petition from Michael Hill on behalf of Green Gables Investments. This, I received this petition yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Item 11F, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, calling for the election of the Mayor and two commission members elected at large with the election to be held on Tuesday, April 12, 2016, as provided by the Charter of the City of West Miami, providing for designation of the canvassing board, providing for the closing of registration books, designating hours and places for voting and establishing the qualifying fee for Mayor and commission members, providing for an effective date by Mayor and City Commission. And Mayor and members of the City Commission is the duty of this office as supervisor of elections for the City of West Miami to report that pursuant to the Charter of the City of West Miami, elections, municipal elections shall be held every two years, every even numbered year, meaning that the elections are on April 12, 2016. The qualifying period for the West Miami elections are, start on Monday, February 22, 2016, at noon and ends on Friday, February 26, 2016, at noon. The closing of the books for the elections is on March 14, 2016 and the required notices will be published in newspaper or general circulation following statutory requirements.
Okay.
Motion.
Any clarification? No? Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, I need a sec.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mungia?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item?
Item 11G, request for resolution authorizing the city manager to execute loan commitment letter with Total Bank and proceed to closing for the loan in connection with the already approved Building Department slash Code Enforcement and Public Works Building, Phase One, City Manager, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Can you read also the resolution H?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item H, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute loan commitment letter with Total Bank and proceed to closing for the loan in connection with the already approved Building Department slash Code Enforcement and Public Works Building, Phase One, providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Man, title's through the process.
Basically, this is the actual loan commitment letter. We are now very close to closing on the, on the loan for the project as approved by the Mayor and City Commission that encompasses Phase One of the construction of the Public Works Department Office Building. The loan amount is $597,000. The city also has, is contributing to this project as previously reported and now this, this resolution basically authorizes me to be the agent for the city, obviously with counsel, to review the documents for the closing and actually close the loan so that we can start issuing payment to the contractor, the successful contractor for the actual construction of Phase One of the building. Mr. Villalobos has reviewed the loan commitment letter and he will, he will advise you or, he has advised me that the letter is legally sufficient. I will ask the commission to authorize our city attorney to guide us through the legal process and look at all the closing statements and attend the closing as well.
Okay, thank you. We have actually another item, you want to, let's do the following, you want to read that, item I?
Everything is connected.
Everything is connected, but then we got to vote separately, okay? So, I.
Item I, request for authorization to expand a cap of blank for legal fees in connection with the review and execution of closing documents to include attendance at closing in connection with the Building Department slash Code Enforcement and Public Works Building, Phase One, City Manager, City Attorney.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As it has happened in the past, the city needs representation, the bank has their own lawyers that look for their interest. As it happened in the past, you have authorized me to represent you. This is outside of my responsibility as city attorney. I would suggest that you authorize the city manager to have a cap of $1,500 for my participation. I don't know how many documents are going to be presented to me for my examination, so it will be a cap of that amount of money.
Okay, well, any questions?
Is it $1,500?
Yes.
$1,500?
Yes. I need a motion on item H. If there's no question, okay? Need a second? Okay, I have a second, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mungia?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, item I, I need a motion.
Motion. Cycle.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mungia?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Go to the order.
Yes, Mayor, I have something here to present to the commission. You know, in, in, in the month of October, there is a big company here in the area, Leon, Leon, Leon Medical Centers, they start a program and produce volunteer program and they select West Miami, the first city, to ask us, especially in the community center, when our senior citizens going to have lunch and all the things, to select one person who is very low in income and person who cannot do by themselves to take care of their houses, so they free, they paint the house. So we select a lady, it was Maria Fernandez, 57, 51, Southwest 14th Street. And in October, the people from Leon Medical Center, they came here and they paint, they repair all the outside, the house and they paint the house. They nearly repeat this program in, in May, by Mother's Day. So I asking you, the commission, a plaque for Leon Medical Center and one for Leon Medical Centers Health Plan. They are two institutions, separate corporations. So I think with this, the list thing, also continuously, you know, they sponsor things in our senior center. Now for the Valentine's, the 11th or 12th, which is the 12th, Yolanda?
Yes, the celebration is, I believe, on February 11th and we're still working with the dates.
They bring the music and they bring entertainment from them. So I asking this commission to approve, to make a recognized plaque for Leon Medical Center and one other one for Leon Medical Centers Health Plan.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so Commissioner Suarez, am I to understand that Leon Medical Center is not only fixing bodies, they're fixing houses now too? I like that.
Well, let me tell you.
I like that. They're growing, they're expanding.
That's why, that's why.
Instead of the structure of the body, they're even doing the structure of the houses. I love it. I love it.
That is why I see your husband always very happy.
And thank you for bringing that to the table. I love it.
Your husband is very happy. He has a very smart wife.
And you found this and you wanted to us, I love it. I love it.
See, you're very smart lady.
Love it, love it, love it, love it, love it.
I never thought.
They're going beyond the body, they're going into housing.
I never thought, I never thought about it.
Making the houses better. It's one of the bodies, I love it.
All, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations, Mr. Rodriguez, that is my wife.
Anything else for the go to the order?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have something.
Go ahead.
I, I'd like to wish Godspeed to our, I believe our number one son, City of West Miami, our Senator Marco Rubio, as he undertakes probably the hardest job in all the land. I hope, I wish, I pray that he be sustained in his courage, his integrity and his fortitude. I feel very proud to, to sit here as I know that he was probably sitting here not too long ago. It's very commendable what he's doing and not many people can, can fit the bill to his undertaking, so I'd like to publicly express my gratitude to him, to all that he's doing. He's serving the political process of the nation and hopefully in that discourse, you know, our country can be better served and, and improved and become a great country.
Again.
That, that sounds like I'm a, but anyways. Godspeed to him.
Typically, go to the order is for, for the table, but such an exceptional citizen.
One more thing from the table before we go out to the residents. I want to publicly, along with my colleagues, wish our prominent corporate citizen a very happy birthday.
A very happy birthday.
Do you want us to sing? No singing?
Happy, happy 52 years.
Seventy.
Seventy. Fifty. Seventy. Oh, seven.
Happy birthday, Elliot. Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Do you think we sing a song?
Now to the, you can, the lovely gentleman behind him had his hand up as well.
I want to exert a point of privilege, Mr. Smart can speak here anytime he wants.
Ah, don't give him that free range.
Mr. Smart?
No, actually.
Cut, cut, no, no.
No, 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 no.
You got dressed up. You got dressed up tonight, so you're going to talk.
You're going to speak.
That's to make her feel good. No, it was just a joke really, that if he does make it, you got to think of a location for a presidential library. Next to my house, by the way.
We got to see if there's a grant for that. We need money. We need money.
Another second, another second lucky husband in our city, see? He has a very smart lady too.
I, need a motion to adjourn. All the same favors say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you, Mayor.